We're live.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Trotwood Madison City Schools January 21st, 2021 Board Meeting livestream via YouTube in accordance with COVID-19 recommendations. The mission of the Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Judah Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Present.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes. Mr. Scares, will you please lead us in the pleasure of allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Allen, please call the roll.
Yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Judah Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes, so it has been adopted. I just wanted to, before we get into community comments, just kind of remind or tell people who've not been to a regular meeting that we talk about all of these items that are on today's agenda during our work session meeting. So we've had about two weeks to talk about this stuff, get any questions answered. So when we vote on the information on tonight's agenda, it's not our first time seeing it, so we're not just voting arbitrarily. We know exactly what we're looking at. So just wanted to throw that out there. Ms. Allen, do we have any community comments this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have A, which is the approval of the minutes from December 3rd, 2020, and December 17th, 2020. B, we have our SERs Pickup Plan Form update. C, we have the approval of the Student Activity Purpose Statement and Budget. D, we had the approval of the donation from Twin Tick Incorporated. And then E is the approval of the Personnel Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions about the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Allen, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Judah Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have our Treasurers' Report. Ms. Allen?
Yes, I have several items this evening to present to you. The first one is 4A is the approval of the December 2020 financial reports. And there are three reports that I would like to present to you. The first one is the Cash Reconciliation Report for the month of December. And the bank statement balances and the investment balances equal $30 million, I'm sorry, $34,107,078.82. Outstanding vendor checks in the amount of $598,650.6. Adjustments due to the January 1st, 2021 payroll are $868,738.81. So the total net adjustments equals $270,088.75. That does adjust the bank balance to equal $34,377,167.57. And that does equal exactly to the meta-financial system. And so our variance bank-to-book is zero. The next report is the, we call it SM2, are the financials for December 2020, which are the information that's on the financial system. It indicates the monthly actuals and the fiscal year-to-date through December 31st, 2020. It indicates the revenues and the expenditures. And then all the way at the bottom, it indicates your ending cash balances and your outstanding encumbrances. The last report is the checks over $1,000. And we did have a Finance Committee meeting this evening. And there were five checks that the Finance members, and that's Mr. Scares and Mrs. Vanessa Judah Freeman, wanted me to pull because they had questions on them. So I did get a chance to pull those, and I will read to you what they were. So check number 095777 to Prodigy Building Solutions in the amount of $154,658. That was for the filtration systems at all five school buildings. Check number 095838, that was to Trotwood Madison in the amount of $41,708.4. That was for reimbursement for the loss of athletic revenue due to the pandemic. And what that was is the CARES money paid for that revenue loss and the amount of the $41,000. Check number 09542 to Goodheart Wilcox Publisher in the amount of $21,117. And that was for career tech certifications at the high school. Check number 095779 to Overdrive, that was for several different books. And I just said, for example, Seven Habits of a Highly Effective Teen, Just Mercy, I think most of us saw that movie, and Raising in the Sun. Those were just an example of some of the books that were bought. And then the last check was to Tone Savvy in the amount of $1,179. The check number was 095781, and that was for online music instruction. And so those are the checks that were brought up at the Finance Committee meeting. And so that is the end of my financial report.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the financial reports for December 2020.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a question, and it is 95753amazon.com in the amount, looks like $22,928.5.
So I will notate that, Ms. Moore, and I will have to pull that check. And then I will send out an email to the board to let you know what that was, because off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any others? Hearing none. Ms. Allen, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Judah Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes. Motion carries. Looks like we had the Superintendent's Report, but I don't have anything listed. Did you just want to go into your discussion item, Dr. Cosby?
You're on mute. You're on mute. You're on mute, Dr. Cosby.
Hey, that helps me practice what I want to say, right? Hello, everyone. Yes, I would like to talk about our re-entry plan update.
Okay.
Okay. At this point, our families should have received a letter through Parents Square and also received a phone message notifying them of our plan. And our plan is that we will have our students return to school while some are having their appointments now. As we mentioned before, our students who are on, who are taking therapies that require more personal interaction, those are happening or getting started. And then, beginning February 16th, and I had initially said the 15th, but we're on holiday on the 15th for President's Day. So actually, the start date will be Tuesday, February 16th, pre-K 5. We'll all come in Monday through Thursday and will work remotely on Friday. Then, grades 6 through 12 will return on March 1st. They will be coming in the same way, Monday through Thursday, and remote on Friday. So far, when we did our initial survey to the community about who was intending to, you know, continue remote or to return in person, as I shared with you, it was approximately 53% to 47%. With those numbers, we feel that we can maintain the social distancing of six feet, which is very important because our quarantine now is based on maintaining social distance and being masked. If that is occurring in the classes, then if someone is in close contact, they would not have to quarantine. If we cannot maintain those things, then a student who is in close contact or a teacher would have to quarantine. We don't know what those numbers are. We have given the families until next Friday to send in their final decision whether they want to remain remote or to come into school. We're really excited about this. We feel like the Monday through Thursday adds enough hours that we feel the students will definitely get an impact of having that opportunity to interact in person with their teachers. So at this point, as I said earlier, we will have, masks will be required. Thermal scanners are in all of our buildings, and we've added numbers to them as of November. So parents will be asked to do wellness checks prior to their children coming to school, but they will be having their temperatures checked as they come into the buildings. So each building is still working out that process, what that will look like. But we do have thermal scanners, and they are, they're being used for adults already, and we're hoping to be able to get the students in on that as well. So if anybody has any questions, I can answer those at this point.
I do have a question, Dr. Cosby. What exactly do you mean by a wellness check that parents would do prior to a student coming to school?
So we would ask them to, like, if their child has a cough, or if they have, if they check and they have a fever, to keep them at home. If they're displaying any symptoms that may say they're sick, which of course, we expect and hope that parents do that anyway, but we will be reminding parents to make those checks prior to putting their students on the bus, so that they don't get on the bus if they're, you know, sick, if they're nauseous, or if they, you know, do have a fever, or if we can alleviate that piece where they end up at school sick and then having to call that parent and get them to go home. If a parent would check first and then keep any children that they feel are sick at home. So that's what we mean. And Ms. Mallory just mentioned that there is a check sheet on the website for parents to be able to look at and say, okay, these are the things that we expect.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Allen, Treasurers' comments?
Yes, I wanted to respond back to Board Member Moore's question about Amazon. Mr. Howard did respond as a team. He said that those, those Amazon expenditures were for PPE, that included the temperature scanners, the mass body scanners, and the held-hand misters.
Okay, thank you. Oh, thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome. And also, I wanted to, for my comments, just, I had sent you to the board earlier, the Treasurers' update, but I did say I would speak to it this evening. All good news, money-good news. We completed the Montgomery County CARES report, the $1 million CARES report. And we, they have asked for us to actually scan every single invoice packet, which will take a considerable amount of time, and we're in the process of doing that. But we did send the initial report back to them. We did receive a, almost a half-million-dollar check from the Bureau of Workers' Comp. They had dispersed their proceeds, their investment proceeds that they had collected across the state to the school district, and that was 3.71 times the original BWC amount that we would normally pay for. And this basically is to be used to offset those economic losses during the pandemic. We also received a $62,000 refund from the Montgomery County. They again also had some excess monies that they distributed back out to the school districts. And then I wanted to update you on the state audit. The state audit is finished. I do have a meeting with them on Tuesday morning just to review the report. And then they would like then to send out a invitation to the board for a final audit report meeting sometime the following week. So I will get with President Bozeman to see what's a good time for the board to meet for them, and I can let them know that date and time. So that was all that I had.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Allen? All right. Dr. Cosby, did you have any comments?
Uh huh. I just have a couple of things I would like to share with you. One of the things that has come up on a couple of occasions is how are we keeping up with what's happening while we're remote in the classrooms? And I wanted to let you know that we're using a program called Program Progress Advisor. And it allows us to, when we go into the classrooms, we can, you know, make notes about what we see and give immediate feedback to the teacher about how they're doing. But we can also gather that data as to, you know, how many rooms we're going into, who we're seeing, and what they're doing. So we can set goals and then use this program to sort of monitor those goals. And we have our administrators going in, our Curriculum Department, and I have been in at least one, and I'm trying to get into more. It is, it is very interesting, and it will give us some of that feedback that we need. Because as we know, some of our teachers are really into working remotely. They're doing their playlists, and they're actually carrying them through, and they are working with their students. And then, as in any situation, you know, we have some teachers who need that feedback to be reminded of what the expectations are. So I just wanted you to know that by using Progress Advisor, I can look at who has been in what classrooms, how many times. And we've set a goal for our principals and assistant principals to get into 10 classrooms a week. And this week, Tammy Sterner met her goal and actually overachieved. And Mr. Warner was really close. I think he missed it by one. And so the others will be working on it. And hopefully, at our next meeting, I'll be able to name them as people who actually met their goals as well. So it's really very helpful. The second thing that I wanted to mention to you, because I'm sure as you're out and, you know, you're interacting with people, you've probably heard the term MTSS, and that's Multi-Tier System of Support. It's about students' social-emotional needs. It's also about their academic progress. And it's how those two things sort of come together for the whole child. You hear us talking about the whole child. Well, we are in the process of reviewing what we've already shared with their staff. Like, rollout has happened, but we are continuing that. And we're actually doing a book study on MTSS with their principals, so that they'll be better prepared as we continue to work through this process. It is a process that takes a long time. It's not something that, you know, I'll come back next month and say, hey, we have MTSS, you know, down pat. But it is something that you learn as you keep working through it. And once we get there and we do understand how behavior does impact academics and how to deal with both of those issues for our students, I think it's going to make a lot of difference in, you know, the achievement that our students can make. Finally, for my comments, I did want to give you an update on the vaccination process for our staff. Because since we've told staff, you know, they're coming back February 15th, we want to make sure that they feel as comfortable about that as possible. And so we have found out just this week that we'll be working with Premier Health. They do plan to get our vaccination, our first shots out, the week of February 1st. So I don't have the exact date. And I am working with the people at Premier to determine whether they will come to us in our building, which I have said that we're willing to, you know, have them come. And if we have to go to them, which would be probably going to Miami Valley North, then that's what we would do. So I will continue to keep you updated on that situation. But things are looking up. At least we know who we'll be working with as far as getting our vaccinations now. Also, I just reiterate, for staff who may be concerned, we will have a filtration systems. And as I said, we'll have, in each building, are up to date, and we will have extra thermal scanners. So we're feeling confident that the teachers can come back knowing that we are going to, you know, have things as safe as possible. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Cosby? Okay, that brings us to board comments. Mr. Andrews, do you have any comments?
Just real brief, nothing specific. It's a new year. We have a new administration for the country, and hopefully, a more inclusive movement forward. I'm very grateful for that. Also, looking forward to our students coming back to class, and I'm hoping that they're fired up and interested and are really motivated to come in and just really come in, come back in and pick up where we were headed before all of this began. And so I'm very optimistic and very excited about it, and very hopeful that it all works out well for us. And once we're in, we can stay in.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Ms. Judah Freeman?
Not many comments this evening. I think, I think I'm good. The one thing we mentioned, or I'd mentioned, is our follow-up with the state to make sure that there isn't going to be a testing requirement for this year. And Dr. Cosby, I don't know if you know where the state is on that, but if we, as a board, need to advocate maybe to our state representative that, you know, there should be a push for a moratorium for this school year on testing. So I would like to put that down as a follow-up to the board so that we're accountable for at least following up with our state rep.
Yes, I would like to speak to that. Coincidentally, Ms. Bruno sent me a message that she received, and they are strongly recommending that states overturn the assessment and accountability requirements for the 2021 school year. They're recommending that people do prioritize other things, such as the COVID pandemic, and that it would be important on a statewide level, you know, to have people support doing away with those tests and things for this year. So I will continue, I just, she just sent me that, and I said, yes, that is exciting, and we can look into how we can support it. So I will continue to see what is, with information is out there for you.
May I, Madam President?
Please, yes.
I thought that I saw something on the news yesterday, or maybe the day before, that there were, there was going to be a moratorium. But I just can't confirm it right now. But it seems like I had heard that on the news, the network news, not network, but local news, maybe a day or two ago. So it is, I know it's at least being discussed and heavily considered.
Right. And Ms. Bruno did say, actually, that that information is from the federal government. Her organization, Ohio Organization, is supporting it. And so to your point, Ms. Judah Freeman, we need to probably be prepared to have support also from our school board. So we'll continue looking into that. Get back with you.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Moore, do you have any comments?
Other than, Dr. Cosby, thank you so much for the update. We really appreciate that on where we stand along the lines of our students' choices. It's good to know that they have some additional time, too, to make up their minds as far as which way they want to go. I appreciate that. I have been speaking with Madam President throughout the week, and I don't know if you have some comments on some of the things that we discussed along the lines of Trotwood Madison City Schools being a site for vaccinations, or anything along the lines of how we are going to move forward with even evaluating our students toward the end of the year. Was that something that you were going to comment on, President Bozeman?
I was going to briefly talk about it. We don't have, I think Marlin got an email back. In fact, I think Marlin said he got an email or a call at exactly the same time that I contacted him from Trotwood requesting the same thing. But he was saying that he was letting, he let them know that Trotwood was available and ready to go. I don't know if Marlin was on the call or not, but I was reading the email. And then I think, Dr. Cosby, you told him just to surprise. And then I had also talked to someone at the Public Health Department, and they also know that Trotwood has sort of worn our hat in the ring to be a site for the vaccinations.
Okay.
I am here. I am here. And just to follow up, yes, we did have conversation with Public Health and the city of Trotwood with regards to that. There is nothing confirmed at this point. They are still working through a lot of other logistical things. And one thing they did state and consider is that once kids were back in school, that they would most likely seek alternative sites. But with us not having kids at this point, that if they decided to move to more large-scale vaccinations, drive-through vaccinations, that we did have space. So we have touched base with them and let them know of our availability. And we are just awaiting a call with regards to that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, those were your comments. That was it?
Okay. Yeah, yeah. The second half was how we're going to evaluate our students moving forward. I don't know if we're going to do that in, at another time, as far as an in-depth discussion. There was an article in the paper about what's happening in the region. So just a consideration for us. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
That might be great. Thank you. Mr. Scares, comments?
Yes, ma'am, just a few. Thank you for the opportunity. A lot of the comments that I have, and it's really just three, stem from a conversation I had with the governor yesterday. The council, the State Council, or State Evangelical Council that I serve on, affords me the opportunity to speak with them on a regular basis. And I did ask a couple of questions of the board members in terms of things they wanted me to ask directly. One of them were, one of them was about the moratorium on testing. And it is a legislative issue, and we would need the state legislature to, you know, to create legislation around whether or not testing is going to be halted for any number of to create legislation around whether or not testing is going to be halted for any number of days. So if he could put a moratorium on testing personally, I think that would be his desire. He just doesn't have the legal right to do so. So unless it comes down from the federal government, it is held up or it is left up to our state legislature. And tonight, after our phone call, I'll personally call our state representative. I have fairly good relationship with him and find out exactly what the plan is. Secondly, in terms of in-classroom statistics regarding the virus, the governor did provide us an update yesterday that pretty much said the science around the coronavirus and in-classroom instruction really has provided that schools are one of the safest places to be when all of the protocols are followed. And I hope that is some solace to the staff and teachers that are, that are a bit apprehensive about going into the buildings. And again, that is what the evidence has shown, is that the schools have been and continue to be one of the safest places where people gather if all protocols, protocols are followed. So I'm excited about kids going back into the classroom. The vaccination of school staff, teachers was really the governor's idea to help get schools back open. We were not originally supposed to be in that number, but to help promote the opening of schools. They pushed school staff up that number. So again, I hope that, you know, that gives us the ability to understand how serious, I think, the governor takes getting kids back into the classroom. And that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. That's some great information. And my comments, I don't really have many. I thought you guys were going to mention the inauguration. That was my main thing, but nobody said anything about the inauguration. But I watched, you know, of course, the first part, you know, with the whole swearing-in. And then I kind of backed away after a while. And then I went back later when Jon Bon Jovi was on because I always watch him perform because he reminds me of when I was at Trotwood High School. So I always have to watch that. But anyway, the song he sung was Here Comes the Sun. And when he sung it last night, it really kind of just hung in there with me. And then even when I woke up today, it was still on my mind. And I think it was because I just know that now we have this real national strategy for COVID-19. We actually have a plan for it. I know that now all of our school doors can be opened safely, you know. I know that now, at some point soon, all of our lives are going to have some semblance of like a pre-COVID normalcy. It's going to happen soon. And I really do believe that the sun is coming. It's actually going to come now. So I'm really excited about it. So I do want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for hanging in here with us tonight. And thank you for all you do for us here at Trotwood. And I hope you have a great evening. And I would like now to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Judah Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Make adjournment. Have a good evening.